Ready, six oh one. All righty, say good evening and welcome to Isleta Independent School District's video conference. You know, the Board of Trustees. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. It is input electronic sign up shows the rules for provided in the electronic posting notice of our meeting. The board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on this issue. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at six oh one P M. We have a quorum with Charlie Bustillos, Sotero Ramirez, Shane Hagerty, Mike Ross, Connie Woodruff, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. And now for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Matthews, do we have any citizens' input?
Yes, we do. Um, we have Mr. Matthew Bickel, and he will be speaking on action item number one and two.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, is it my turn?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I just wanted to briefly discuss action item one and two. I definitely agree that the year-round education program has its benefits. My concern, as well as many of my neighbors that have also expressed the same, is that the decision to start the school year two weeks earlier will potentially cause a lot of issues and hardships with families that have already made travel arrangements and plans. My son is one of them that he's supposed to be coming in after the school year starts because we based it on the the original school start date for the year. I know that there's some other ones that their children are coming from overseas, and they're in the same boat where they're supposed to be coming in approximately a week before the school year was supposed to begin. So my, briefly, I guess my concern with starting the school year earlier as proposed will cause the hardship and students will miss school because of pre-made school plans or travel plans. That's all I have for that. I just wanted to make sure my input was heard for that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, Ms. Matthews?
You, we have Ms. Chris Lopez, who will be speaking on under modifications.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, just, uh, thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm speaking today as a current, as a concerned parent and husband. I have one child at Chirrodol Soul and one at Desert View, and my wife is a teacher at Hank's. As we end the school year under the COVID-19 situation, my concerns are for next school year. I'm totally in favor of the new year-round calendar. But please, and I implore you to not look at it as a solution for the COVID-19 pandemic. I know that you'll make, be making a decision soon on how to reopen schools, but want to let you know that I'm against reopening schools until there's an effective treatment or vaccine for COVID-19 regardless of the calendar. Keeping kids six feet apart and wearing a face mask all day is virtually impossible. Student tag, cough on each other, are back-to-back when waiting in line, share supplies and food, and don't wash their hands properly after going to the restroom. They can't be expected to keep their hands to themselves or keep from touching their faces all day. If the schools are reopened regardless of the new year-round calendar or safety accommodations made, my fear is that they're going to contract COVID-19 from each other. My other concern would be for my wife and her health and safety. Every year she comes home at some point during the school year, sick, having caught a stomach bug, a cold, the flu, or something from one of her students. Just hope it's not COVID-19 this year. I appeal to your sense of being parents, spouses, educators, and champions of students. My kids can learn online, and my wife can teach online. Don't underestimate the teacher's ability to teach or the student's ability to learn. It can be done online socially distant and safe from COVID-19. Let's wait until there's a vaccine or some sort of treatment. Even if their learning is affected just for a little while. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Ms. Juanica, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we do. We have our Linda Valencia, President of YTA, speaking on the year-round calendar.
Good evening, President Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre and Board of Trustees, and a special welcome to Mr. Shane Hagerty. Glad to have you back, sir. I'm Arlinda Valencia, and I'm President of the Isleta Teachers Association, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the year-round calendar. After meeting with YTA representatives and YTA leadership, it was a consensus that our members are in support of this new calendar. The employees of this district are in total support of trying something new if it is believed that it is in the best interest for them and their students during this unprecedented time of COVID-19. I can honestly say that employees aren't worried about when their jobs will start or end. They will be ready whenever they need to be. What they are more worried about is coming back to the unknowns of the day-to-day schedule. Will this district protect them? Will there be smaller classes? Will it be a hybrid schedule? Will everyone wear masks? The unknowns are keeping teachers up at night. As, as the saying goes, patience is a virtue. But during this unusual time, it seems that patience has gone out the window, and it's understandable. Teachers and employees are looking for answers that the district can only provide, and for that, they know they must wait. And as YTA President, I will continue to stay positive and know that Y S D will do the best that they can for all those involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Matthews, do we have any other speakers?
No, sure, we don't.
Thank you so much. Okay. During the June fifteenth board workshop, no items were pulled for a separate vote. Are there any consent items you wish to pull for a separate vote? If there are no items you wish to pull for a separate vote, the agenda will be considered the consensus of the board. Dr. De La Torre, do you have any reports for us this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, good to be together. I want to really take a moment to thank and congratulate Patricia Ayala in Communications, her Public Relations Team for the, the class of 2020 virtual commencement exercises. The ceremonies were extremely well done and well received by the community thanks to the comprehensive planning, hard work, and communication between our high schools, high school personnel, and our Public Relations Department. The end of this school year was challenging for everyone, but our virtual graduations safely and successfully provided our graduates with their special moment in the spotlight. Once again, I want to congratulate the class of 2020. I want to thank all of you for participating in the virtual commencement exercise. Your comments were inspiring and appropriate given the circumstances. Patricia and her team, working with our high school principals and our early college high school, did an outstanding job, and I've taken the time to look at not just neighboring school districts commencement exercises, but commencement exercises across the state. And I believe that we are a model in the event that we ever have to rely on the virtual or digital means of celebrating this incredible milestone for these incredible students who have really persevered and demonstrated great resilience throughout the pandemic. So the, the year ended well on that note. We did start our summer school program on Monday, June eighth. It offers both a low-tech and a high-tech option to fit the needs of all students. We allow students this year, as you know, to keep their digital devices over the break so they could continue to enhance their learning, their remediation, acceleration, and enrichment, and it'll run for the next three weeks. In addition, our students also have access this summer to our instructional programs and resources through our virtual learning program, The District at Home. And I really encourage parents and students to keep learning and keep accessing these programs so that they don't suffer the learning loss and the regression that we typically see over the summer. And as you might imagine, would be significant, given that depending on when we start school, they could have been out of that traditional classroom environment for five, almost six months in some cases. We have modified our summer school grab-and-go meal service. It's currently taking place from Monday through Thursday at fourteen sites with an extra meal provided for Friday. Although summer school will end on June twenty-fifth, we will continue serving school meals for children into July thanks to a waiver from the United States Department of Agriculture. This month, because of the great work that Ms. Bellamontes and Dr. Ronald Livermore, Jimmy Vasquez, Mr. Basuto, they all really stepped up and helped create and design these drive-through COVID-19 testing sites. So the county asked us to go ahead at our expense, at our cost, to extend that service through June twenty-fifth in partnership with both the city and the county. So testing is done by appointment only, by calling our hotline at four three four ten ninety-two from Monday through Thursday. And then finally, I'd like to thank our former board member and Vice President from the Parkland High School Learning Community, Richard Kudier, for his service to the Isleta Independent School District. Mr. Kudier was a tireless advocate for students, and his contributions will not be forgotten. We delivered a plaque and a letter of appreciation to Mr. Kudier this morning, and we wish him only the best. I would also like to take a moment to welcome a familiar face, a really familiar face, back to our Board of Trustees. Some of you have already acknowledged and have recognized that Mr. Shane Hagerty is among us again. And we look forward to his experience, his input, and his contributions as the new Board Representative for the Parkland High School Learning Community. Welcome, Mr. Hagerty. That concludes my report. President Ochoa.
Thank you, Dr. De La Torre. All right, so we'll move on now to our next item is the election of Board Vice President. Possible action to elect and see in any board officer position. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff. Did you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Woodruff.
I'm sorry. Okay, hang on. Okay. Mr. President, I move to nominate Carlos Bustillos to serve as Board Vice President effective immediately.
I'll second.
We have a second by Mr. Hagerty. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
And Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yay. Result seven in favor.
President, President Ochoa, I'd like to say something real quick.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I am truly humbled for everybody, for, for my fellow board members to choose me to do this position. A little nervous, excited at the same time. Since I became a board member three and a half years ago, it's really been an honor to work with everybody here. You guys are all about kids and teachers, and I've had the tremendous pleasure of serving with you guys, and thank you for nominating me. And I promise that I will, I will continue to do the best I can for kids and students, and thank you once again.
Mr. Bustillos, I look forward to working with you and as well as all of us. Thank you again.
No, thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we will now recess this board to convene the same group as the trustees as also serves as a district public facility corporation board. This Board of Directors must be maintained due to the lease purchase of certain properties within the district as set up years ago. Okay, now I call the Y S D Public Facility Corporation Board of Trustees to order with the following directors present. Mr. Charlie Bustillos, Mr. Sotero Ramirez, Mr. Shane Hagerty, Mr. Mike Rosales, Mrs. Connie Woodruff, this is Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Okay, action item. Move elected officers for the Y S D Public Facility PFC Board Director. Is there any discussion? No further discussion. May I have a motion?
I so.
President, was somebody else going?
Who said I so move?
Me.
Okay. Trustee Bustillos moves.
I recommend. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Lucero, second. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bustillos.
I recommend, recommendation approved as elected officers of the Public Facility Corporation Board, the same person elected to serve as officers of the Board of Trustees of the Isleta Independent School District.
Okay. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee, how do you vote? Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote? You're muted.
I'm sorry. Now am I on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, you voted yes. Okay. Lucero?
Yay.
Okay, Trustee Hagerty?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are at seven in favor. May I have a motion to adjourn the PFC?
Still moved. That's Connie Woodruff.
Hey, I have a German at six twenty P M. Hey, I reconvene the meeting of the Isleta Board of Trustees at six twenty P M. The order has been approved. May I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Mr. President, this is Connie Woodruff.
Okay. Hey, we have a motion, my, with Woodruff? Do we have a second?
Do you want me to read the motion or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by administration.
Just for my record, who's second?
Bustillos.
Bustillos, okay, thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Hey, Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
I, Trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are seven in favor. All right. Okay, now we're, go on to the action items. Action item number one, possible adoption of year-round education program. Is there any discussion? Ms. Lucero.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa and fellow board members. I just have a brief statement I would like to say. As we move forward to plans to begin the new school year, I have full confidence that our superintendent and administration are working on plans that have our employees and students' health and safety as the premise. We need to acknowledge that our teachers, support staff, and parents have legitimate concerns, fears, and apprehensions. My daughter is beginning the eighth grade at the district, as you all know, and I share some of those feelings. As trustees, it falls upon us to make decisions that continue to provide high-quality education and during this pand, and during this pandemic, and put as many precautions in place as possible to ensure the health and safety of our students and employees. We need to recognize there are employees and students with underlying health conditions, as well as employees and parents that have deep concerns and discomfort with returning to our facilities. Our superintendent and leadership team have been working on viable options for our return to school, which might include a hybrid option, as well as distance, a distance learning program. I also want to add that it's a slap in the face to Y S D and school districts across Texas that the state of Texas decided to keep the funds we are due to assist us with the pandemic while they pacify us with face masks, hand sanitizer, desk dividers, thermometers, and gloves. Regarding the year-round school schedule, in the event there is a spike in COVID cases, I recommend that we, as a Board of Trustees, begin the school year remotely. Right now, the state seems to be dictating the how we are to return to school and holds us hostage with funding. For me, our students and employees' health comes first.
Thank you, Ms. Lucero, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you, President Ochoa. Good evening. I, my, my thoughts have to do with uncertainty. And we heard, and basically what we heard tonight from, from our speakers and and just, and, and the constant thing is the uncertainty. I would like to reassure the community that, that this board has been engaged and, and we have daily conversations with Dr. De La Torre and the leadership in the cabinet on just more things than we can think of. And one of the, the constant things is, is that even though some things have settled down a little bit, there's still a lot of uncertainty. They're still changing the plan as, as the hours go by. What was good yesterday is not good today. What's good this morning is not good this afternoon. So that uncertainty makes it worse. And by the way, like Ms. Lucero, I, I have a, a wife and a son who are educators working in another public school district. I'm scared. I'm worried about them. You know, I worry about those children that we have the responsibility for. I worry about our community, and so I share all that. And, and you have my promise and commitment that regardless of, of the direction we go to, we'll, we'll do what we need to do to protect not only our students and, and, and teachers, but all our staff and, and all the folks that come in contact with our, with our, our schools. I'd also like to just make a comment that I'm, I'm angry. I'm very angry with T E A and, and, and the things they've done to us. And, you know, funding being, you know, one big issue. And then there's going to be future funding that we're going to have to contend with. And other people are getting rich while this is going on. I find that totally unacceptable. I would ask for T E A to, to take a hard look, and I realize that the state is, is also controls the strings and the purses on that. But ask T E A and the state to take a hard look and about the things they're doing to us as in public ed and reconsider some of their decisions. And those decisions include not only funding, but also too, things like testing. We know we're behind. We know that we've got to get kids caught up. And I've talked to every one of the associates about how I feel strongly about certain groups within our community who, you just can't treat every kid as, as a rubber stamp. We have to do something in, for each one of our children and develop an education plan. And so we do that well, but we've got a lot more work going forward in the future. And so I would remind the community about that too, that we, we are constantly on guard for that. And so going forward, I'm, I'm supportive of, of this particular document. I'm supportive of discussions about those people who have challenges because we start early and it's kind of a, they perceive it as a last-minute thing. The district will work with you. Please, you know, communicate, and that's the only way for us to, to do things. Talk to your principals, you know. Talk to your, your children's teacher. You know, talk to us. We'll be glad to listen as well, too. And so with that, I thank you very much, President Ochoa.
Good, Mr. Ramirez, anybody who, Mr. Bustillos, go ahead.
Mr. Hagerty was first. You want to go? Thank you. I've talked with a multitude of my community members, and I'm here to represent them and vote the way that they feel this needs to go. What I didn't do well was get out the the link to the public comment. And with that said, I did have a message from one lady who texted me before the meeting started, and I would like to share hers because she wasn't able to get that link. I wasn't able to get it to her. And what she had stated was, as a parent, I feel that there are enough uncertainties and changes that occurred and will continue to occur. The changes in the calendar, changing the calendar late will cause more disruption to students and their parents. If we were not in these circumstances, I would be okay with it. I do agree it's beneficial to our students, but I just don't think it is the time to propose this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Mr. Bustillos?
I guess, you know, I want to echo what Ms. Lucero and Mr. Ramirez said. I, too, I, too, have my wife who works for the district. She's a teacher. And I have my two, two kids that are going to be students. And it's a scary time. I do, I, I think about them all the time, thinking, we're going back to school, and that time's coming. Is the how? How are we gonna, how are we gonna do this? I think we all have that same question is how are we gonna, how is this gonna work out? I think Dr. De La Torre was posed a question. What is, what does school look like? And, you know, when we start, how are we gonna?
I think Dr. Del Torre was posed a question. What does, what does school look like? And, you know, when we start, how are we gonna do that? I know I'm very confident that they will, they will have something together, put something together that's gonna keep our kids safe and our teachers safe. But it's still, it's still something that we come back to is how is it gonna work? And we, nobody knows that. Nobody knows that. And at this point in time, I know that everybody here, from all the trustees to Dr. Del Torre and his cabinet, I know they're working diligently on coming up with a plan. You know, I've had several letters come to me, and it does keep me up at night. And I know it keeps, you know, my fellow board members up at night. So I also just want to say that I know, know that we're working. We're in constant communication with legislators and other. I've been talking to teachers and parents, and I know your concerns. And believe me, we all, we all feel, we're all carrying that. We're carrying that on our shoulders as well. So, and I'm, and I'm for that for year-round. And I, I've talked to, said a lot of teachers that are for it, too. So I know it's gonna help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustillos. Anybody else? I just want to say that I concur with everything that you all said. I've also received emails stating the same concerns. And I have to say that I am a teacher, too, but I also have two grandkids that are going to, one to Hanks and one to Desert View. And yes, and, and I related this and conveyed this to Dr. Del Torre and his staff, we are all on the same, you know, on the same note that we have to be foremost, safety and the well-being and health of all of our children first. Our teachers and all of our employees that are going to have to go to work, that's the foremost concern for us. The other stuff we can deal with, whatever it may be, but we have to keep their safety foremost in front of everything we decide on. And the how, too, is, as Dr. Del Torre and his staff are working, that is going to bring up more questions than answers. And I know that we will work through it. That's our job, and not only because we're on the board, but because we're all parents and teachers and whatever. We all have the same concern. And this is not unique to YSD. It's, I mean, it's all here in the city as well as the country. So we're not, you know, everybody's talking about this. So, we can.
Mr. Ochoa, can I say one thing, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. I waited a little late on that. I was just gonna ask and make sure that we can somehow get this out on record that just as soon as we have some sort of concrete plans, if not sooner, that we can get these things distributed to to our constituents, to our students, to our teachers. Because I think that that will do a whole lot to help this uneasiness be resolved. So if we could have some sort of a, I don't know if we need a proclamation or whatever, but something that just, that just says to everyone, "We're gonna, we're gonna sell this for you as soon as possible, as soon as it's humanly possible."
Yes.
That's what I, that's what I want to say on that.
Yes, ma'am. I know tonight is a decision relative to what the calendar looks like, relative to what the school day will look like and the options available to students. And I think option is the key word here, and that is for those parents who are uncomfortable and anxious and aren't ready to send their children back to our school district. This school district will offer an online distance learning platform for those parents from day one, whether day one is Monday, August 3rd, or day one is Monday, August 24th. So for example, for the gentleman that spoke earlier, not a problem. If they can log on from wherever they are, they can, they can start the school year with their peers and do not need to be present. The bigger conversation will be also providing the option to those parents who are comfortable and feel comfortable sending their children to us. We will have all of the safety elements in place. And so if they choose to do that, that will be an option. As part of that, Dr. Chacon and any number of directors, they've involved principals, they've involved teachers. We've met with the association. We should have something for you to consider by early next week and something we can disseminate to our community by about this time next week.
Thank you.
I just wanted to. Mr. Rosales? I'm not gonna take any of that time. I think all the comments that were made are very appropriate. I canvassed all of Eastwood, and basically it's the same, it's the same concern, the same scenario. And of course, we're all in the same, not knowing, in the uncertainty like, like, trusty. So, Telo, Ramirez mentioned. But I feel that as long as we address and continue, and you already addressed that, Dr. Del Torre, the safety issue. And the other most important in my mind is communication. We can assure the, or at least let our, let our parents know what we're doing and the choices that we have, the online availability for those persons that do, or children, or the parents that do not feel comfortable and send their children. Those are the real things that we need to address. And I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. So as difficult a decision as this is, we've got to move on it, and we've got to do that. I'm not concerned with the politics involved because there's a lot of dynamics going on in the state of Texas. I just had a meeting this morning with one group, and the battle's not, not lost yet. And so there's a lot of different things that are going to be coming forth as far as money is concerned. But worry about those things when we get there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosales. Anybody else have anything to say? Hey, thank you all for your comments. They are, I mean, they're right to the point. I think our community feels what we just spoke about. And hopefully, we can come up with a consensus and see what happens. Okay? So, thank you again. Okay, if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Ms. Woodruff?
This is Connie Woodruff. I move to approve adoption of a single-track year-round education program under Texas Education Code Section 25.084, effective beginning with the 2020-2021 school year, and authorizing the superintendent to take all actions needed to implement change and to interpret and administer district policies and regulations accordingly.
Okay. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Mike.
I have a second. Thank you. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote? What was that?
No.
Nay? Okay. And, yes. So, results are six in favor, one opposed. Hey. Action item number two, modification of the 2020-2021 instructional calendar. Is there any discussion? Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, sir. Dr. Del Torre, I noticed, I got an updated calendar, I guess, this morning from one of the cabinet members. Yes. And I understand why they sent the updated calendar. Do you anticipate we'll have any other, any additional changes that we have to be concerned with?
No, we, in considering this, what we determined was, if in fact we're moving to this calendar to really try and recover or accelerate learning, then half-days for professional development that were built into the original calendar do not take priority over the instructional minutes that we're doing this to provide for students. And I think in speaking with President Valencia, one of the things that, that she said was, "Let's not try to have options throughout the school year that are driven by district interests, like excessive professional development, excessive conferences, that thing. Let's really try and focus on instructional minutes for students." The exception or the caveat being that if and, if and when, and I suspect they will be, teachers are interested in becoming more comfortable with technology and using video cameras and all of those elements that come with distance learning, that if we could provide opportunities for them on non-instructional days to become better at delivering online instruction, that they would appreciate that. But let's not cut into their routine, because once they get a routine under this new model, they're gonna try and get better and better every week. Because I think our model, most of the models that we're gonna present to you here in the near future have an element of online distance learning. And it could be 100% at the beginning, and it could be 80%. Just depends on how our parents and our community react prior to the first day of school.
Okay, that was my, my concern about any potential future changes. So even if something were to come down the line, which is not likely at this point, it would, they would be very, very minimal gas, correct?
The only thing that, and this is just me, and it may have come to me at 3:30 or 4:00 in the morning, that if, for whatever reason, end of July, we see such a significant spike, that it doesn't make sense to even have a school-open model for any student, would we be able to pivot quickly and offer the online program for all students? And the answer is absolutely.
Dr. Del Torre, may I ask you a question? I had this question earlier, and I guess I should have asked in the first part. But what is it we consider a spike? Like, what percentage of cases constitutes a spike for our district?
It wouldn't be our district. It would be regional, and it would really adhere to whatever Governor Abbott does when he believes that a region isn't making the progress that they should be.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Yeah, thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move.
Motion?
I move to approve the recommendation by the administration, approve modification and replacement of the 2020-2021 instructional calendar to conform to the year-round education program as presented to the board as revised on June 17th.
May I have a second?
Second. This is Connie Woodruff.
Woodruff, second. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yay.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Patalis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
Your Ochoa, how do you vote? Yes. All right, results are at seven in favor. Okay, action item number three, job order contract solicitation, number 22021, CSP, construction process and delegation of authority. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hagerty?
I still have to voice my opposition to this one, especially with the ability for the superintendent to delegate that authority to someone else. I think had, had that language not been there, it would be a different story. But since it is there, there's just not that extra layer of checks and balances that need to be in place in order to allow that kind of latitude.
And after thinking about what Shane mentioned on Monday, I went back and I met with and discussed this with Mr. Soffe and Susan Austin. And I think that there may be a misunderstanding as to what this, the level of authority that this gives me. Susan, are you on? If you'll indulge us, Susan's gonna explain what that actually gives me the authority to do and where the board comes in as part of the process.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Mr. Ochoa, Superintendent De La Torre. Yes, this, this motion, this matter is really, it is requesting delegation of authority primarily to issue the job order contracts after the board has approved the award of the master contracts. Because job order contracts are really a two-step process. There, you approve the master agreement, so we select who is going to do the work, and then the job orders get issued throughout the year. And we can make that clearer by just tweaking the motion if you would like. I can make that, I can provide you some revised language. Because right now, it does, the wording implies that he has the authority to do both, but we can make it so that he just, that you all would still approve the award of the solicitation to the different vendors, and then the superintendent would be able to issue the individual job orders as the work arises.
Oh, how do we get that motion?
I can, I can give you. You would. Well, that is one way we can do it, or we can leave it the way the motion reads and have the, have it so that the superintendent can execute the master contracts, select and issue the master contracts, and we can take out the word or designate, which I think Mr. Hagerty had it.
Susan, Susan, can, this is for, and I don't know, Lindley, are you on the line as well? This is for, is this for a specific, if I remember, on Monday, it's for three specific projects? How many projects are we talking about? I, I think that's another thing for some of these agenda items, we need to like, see what work is, what we're considering here as far as projects. But I, I know it's a Delvia parking lot, but what else are we considering in this agenda item?
Uh, Ms. Sleeper?
Hi there. So when we spoke on Monday, we, I did mention the Delvia High School project. But as you may recall, Ms. Austin also mentioned that a job order contract is intended to address any type of recurring maintenance, repair, or projects like that. So one that's urgent, of course, in my mind right now, is the Delvia High School parking lot, because that's resurfacing repaving. But there are many other trades associated with a job order contract. And the master agreement that Susan is referring to will incorporate all of those. The project that I'm specifically applying it to that has urgency is the parking lot.
Okay. So is there a way, and I guess that's how this agenda item is structured, and that's why it's a little bit broad. But this specific, is there a way to structure the, the motion to state that it's specific for this, this, a few months? Or is there a timeframe we can put on it as far as getting these, this work done? Or is that not a possibility? Like, how, how can we be able to move forward so we can get these projects done and not, and not be, and be able to also be held accountable, I guess?
The only thing I would offer about accountability is that by now, I think most of you know that Lindley is the brains and the brilliance behind the business operations in this school district. And I rely on her 110%. So when it mentions my designate, it's because she's got the experience, the expertise, the degrees. It's what she does for a living, and she's better than anyone I've ever worked with. You don't want me making decisions about these types of things in a vacuum. You want Ms. Sleeper involved. You absolutely want her involved. And so I don't, I don't, I don't quarrel with anything the board wants to do. We can bring each of these items back to the board every time that we need to complete a project or go through a procurement process to get the service rendered. It will slow things down. We've always been. We've always been very, very good about uh making sure that we come in under budget, on time. We've never exceeded either of those two, uh, with the exception of one. Project that Ms. Woodruff is aware of. Um, and so we've got a great track record, but in thinking about it, I am not opposed to. How the, how the board wants to do business, but it will always include Miss Leeper. She will always be the person that I listen to because she's been right all the time.
Mister Rosales?
Um, my comment is, we, we've already completed our first batch of, of bond. Without a glitch, with the exception of, of um. The Beller medal thing, and that was, that, that's another, that's another conversation. But um, are we worried about the amount of money, the three million dollars, because it, it, this is a project that needs to be done? I, I think, I, in my, it's my opinion, my opinion is that the track record has already been sent, uh, set. Uh, Lindley is, is a tremendous, tremendous administrator. I also will, will say this, I'm, I have never run into a more um. Prepared individual, professional individual as Ms. Lindley, and she didn't pay me to say this, believe me. And, and I want to make sure that we, we, we move forward in a, with the, I guess, the. Feeling that we have, we have a degree of trust, so the degree, degree of trust towards our superintendent. And the people that he worked with that have tremendous responsibilities. And uh, Mister Hagerty, I, your point is very well taken, very well taken. But I feel that we, we can, as we move through, we cannot continue, we cannot afford. I'm, when things, there's, this, this community has never had a billion and a half dollars of construction. And so consequently, the competition is fierce. Am I correct, Mister Bustillos? We, when we have to move on projects, we gotta move on projects right now. It used to be Iran going on. But now we have, and our track is there. So my recommendation is to keep what we have and go forward with what was presented. Uh, well, Mister Hagerty.
Thank you, Mister Rosales. Mister Hagerty, do you have something?
Uh, just, just to go off your comment, uh, Dr. D'Altorre, the reason why I would, the, or designee taken out is the fact that. Uh, as wonderful as Miss Leeper may be, she's not our employee, we can't hold her accountable as a collective board. Can't hold you accountable. So by you doing the, the decision. If something were to go wrong, we can hold you accountable as opposed to someone who isn't our employee.
Well, what I would offer to you is that since they are all my employees, you can hold me accountable for anything. That any employee in the district does, or either I knew or should have known falls on me. So Lindley is just an extension of my role. If she moves forward and I fail to recognize an error or something that is serious. You can still hold me accountable because ultimately, I'm your only employee, and if I delegate that to her. Then by association, the only, the only person that will lose their job, and I'm being a little bit dramatic, is me. Um, because I've extended that level of faith and trust uh to Lindley or Dr. Chacon. Or any one of these uh people that work for me, I am ultimately responsible for what they do and don't do. And ultimately, um. Would pay the consequence for that. I don't get a pass if something happens uh under my supervision. Simply because another associate superintendent made the decision. I'm ultimately responsible for all of it. And, and with Lindley, I accept that responsibility, and with. All of the people that work around there, I accept that responsibility to different degrees. When we get out into the schools and things happen out in the schools where. There's a principal, we, I think, we expect the principal to have. And assume responsibility for what their employees are doing in their school. There I can see a little bit of separation, but here, I think all of you know that if, uh, if any of. People on my team, because they tell me everything, and here's the other thing I will promise you, and they've been, they've been absolutely good about this. And we're, we're unique, by the way, as a governance team. We tell you guys everything, probably too much. To the point where sometimes uh, I think people have stopped reading our BCS because sometimes it's just. Every week you're getting all of it because we see you guys as our teammates. You know, and, but again, I respect, I respect what you're saying, Shane. I think if. If I were in a different district and I had uh a different team. I might not delegate anything. I might not have that level of trust and comfort, but with the people that uh I've surrounded myself with. For the benefit of the kids and for the board. If someday, God forbid, something happened, I will take responsibility for it, and if it. Cost me a job, it'll cost me a job. But that's how much I, I care and trust about these, care and trust these people.
Thank you. Uh, all I have to say is that I concur with Mister Rosales. I think uh, over the years, uh, the last few years, uh. The district has done well with the bond money, and we have been accountable for everything that has been completed, on time, under budget. And uh, I know that this is a big amount, but uh, considering the. The peculiarities of it, especially as Miss Leeper said, that, you know, sometimes you've got to get those contracts. On time, so you don't have to pay more later on, and. I, like I said, I concur with Mister Rosales. We just need to move on. We have more important items to, to take issue with, but. All, everything that was said tonight was uh important, but we need to vote on this now, so uh. If there's no further.
I think Mister Sotero, Ramirez had something to say.
Uh, I'm just curious, uh, Shane, uh, is this a, are you uh up or down on, I mean. This is an all or nothing thing uh for you, or is there some middle ground that we can find on, on this at all with you?
Yes, certainly. Um, I think, I, I don't see an issue with Dr. D'Altorre taking recommendations from Miss Leeper. You know, this is a great idea, we should move forward on this project, and then you sign off. Uh, but I think those checks and balances are in place for a reason. I think we should keep those checks and balances in place. And either one of those uh. Alternate. Um. Motions that, that Ms. Austin had stated, I think would be great.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I think even uh Lindley may have a, a compromise that would um, ultimately. I am responsible to you, but I also understand you're responsible to your community.
Doctor Laffada, I, I just want to assure that with the motions recommended by, by Ms. Austin. Um, that there won't be any delay in, in obtaining the contractors for these projects. I, I, I don't want delays. Mister Rosales hit it right on, on, he's on point with that, that right now the market is, it's, 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 it's a, it's a. Contractors market, and I want our projects to move as quickly and smoothly as possible before our children return to school.
And, and again, it costs us money, and we all know that the contractors, right now contractors are hard to get. Time is money, and, and if we got an opportunity to get a great deal on something and get going. You know, price of steel goes up within, in, in a, in a month or a couple of weeks, you, you got the price of concrete going up because cement's going up. And if we have opportunity to take that opportunity to do it now, I think it's, it's, it's definitely, you're right. I'm on with Mister Rosales on this one, too.
I, I'm ready to make a motion. I don't know if our other board members are, but I, I'm ready to make the motion as is.
Okay. Further discussion, may I have?
I would like to make, make motion.
Mister.
Okay. To approve a process for job order contract solicitation number two two zero two one CSP. Just construction is provided in the resolution as presented, authorizing superintendent. To execute master contracts with general terms and pricing factors. For job order work from minor construction and certain traits. As needed, execute individual job orders for specific work, not to exceed three million dollars each.
Second?
Second.
Mister Rosales, second. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote?
Yeah, yes.
Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sir, I got you.
Okay.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mister Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes. Lucero, thank you for that, Shane.
My trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Seven in favor, none opposed. Okay, thank you. Okay, action item number four, award of the phase. Number one, solicitation bond, number two, twenty nineteen. RFP dash zero five BP one nine zero nine A. Elementary HVAC and associated upgrades. Discussion. Okay.
President Ochoa?
Oh, sorry, Mister Ramirez.
No, that's fine. Uh, President Ochoa, um, if there's no discussion, I'd, I'd like to move to approve this uh, this uh motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Mister Ramirez.
A second.
Thank you, Mister Rosales. Uh, move to approve recommendation by administration. Approval of award of phase number one, solicitation number bond twenty nineteen RFP. Zero five BP nineteen oh nine A. Capistrano Elementary HVAC and Associated Upgrades. For eleven million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars to AO General Contractor, Inc. From bond funds towards the guaranteed maximum price to be adjusted on bids following one hundred percent set of construction documents. The phase number one adjustment and GMP for remaining phases totaling the final cost of construction and GMP presented at subsequent board meetings.
Thank you, Mister Ramirez, and we have a second by Mister Rosales. Trustee Bustillos, how do you vote? Trustee Bustillos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Ramirez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Rosales, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Woodruff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Lucero, how do you vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hagerty, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, trustee Ochoa, vote yes. Results are in, seven in favor, none opposed. Is it? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, adjourned. Thank you.
Bye, guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye, stay safe.